Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 10th Village Board meeting that is being held remote. We started our first budget hearing, I think it was February, somebody's gonna correct me, 28? No, what was the date? Okay, here. Well, this is our-
Second or third, something like that.
Like that.
February 24th.
Oh, it's the week before, okay.
February 24th.
Thanks, Patty. So February 24th was our initial department report. The board heard from each department had, and just some general talk projects coming up, projects we're in the middle of for different funds and things like that. So we walked away from the last meeting, and Catherine was gonna incorporate some different numbers into this draft that we're looking at. The one in front of you has the 2% cost of living raises worked in for staff members. It has some increases and adjustments we made, we talked about last time, for staff in the Department of Public Works. Some lines were adjusted, and let's see, what was the bill? Catherine, what am I missing here? Can you help me out?
Yeah, hold on, let me just get it up here quick. We changed the New York State retirement figures to reflect what the bill's gonna be next year, so it went up around 2,300 in each account. Let's see, what else? Where did I write this? I really don't know.
It did work in, I can add something to this. I finally found the one sheet that I'm looking at here. We added in a potential tax cap increase to see what that would look like.
Right.
So that has worked into this draft as well, and we'll go into that more in a little bit. I think the general funds we talked about, you had fire department insurances down, but we talked about that last time, I think. So that was-
Right. Yeah, that was $4,000 reduction.
That was a saving this time around.
Right.
So I guess we're going back, and I guess, I don't know if I wanna, like, wanna go by fund or department, I mean, not like we did last time, but I have a couple of questions for Jeff, that I just wanna ask, I don't know, is that okay if I throw those out there just to start with?
To who?
Jeff. He's here with us tonight, 'cause Jeff, doing the project list again?
Yeah.
Serious about, I just don't remember what we, if we talked about this last week, and if we did, or last time, and I'm not sure where it's worked in. The filter building roof, we talked about replacing that, 'cause it's been patched, it's about 11,000 to 12,000, et cetera. That is something that you have, have you budgeted for, or it just needs to be done? I'm just trying to get a sense of that one.
It's just gotta be done, and it may, we've already got all our prices in line, and we've got our, either two or three prices that we need, and depending on their schedule, we gave them the go-ahead for it, and depending on how it works out with their schedule, I don't know if it's gonna be in this present budget or into the next budget.
Do you have money in this budget to cover that?
If we can pull from different lines, yeah, we can.
Okay. My other question about funds comes back to you, and maybe Catherine knows this as well. We all talked about the fund for the, it was the facade fund, so to speak, the firehouse repair fund that we had put aside last year, with some of the money we pulled from that for both the parking lot, and I forgot the other, maybe the lighting is currently, we're looking at taking it out of there. Did we find out how much remains in that line?
Actually, Jeff and I talked about it this morning, and the funds were used the year before. He had pulled the, all the, oh, the gravel and everything that had to be pulled in actually came and showed in the 2019, 20 budget, and you'll see, I think it was around 26,000, and he said this year there was another 4,000. He had put it in the .4 line instead of the firehouse line, so that's why there were no expenses so far in this budget out of that firehouse line.
But do we still have money on the firehouse line? We had put 125 for this year.
Right, and this year's budget was 125, or 130, and you've still got it in for next year, because nothing's been done, so.
Right, I don't mean for next year, I was just looking for this year, 'cause I know we talked about some of the different things like the floor, all these things, I know Nick will be working with the engineers on this, he had already discussed that, but do we have some money in there to cover that stuff this year? Not with this, not this budget, not this draft, but from our 2021 budget.
Right, it shows on your, it shows on your paperwork that nothing has been expended from that line so far this year, and when I checked with Jeff, he said the $4,000 that we did use for lighting and for the, Jeff, what else? Oh, the trees came out of the .4 line instead of that firehouse line, so there's still $135,000 left in the firehouse line.
All right, so that's-
Today.
That's, that's good, 'cause we, yeah, that answers some of the questions for the projects. Nick, go ahead.
If we can get anything done before the end of fiscal year.
True, well, yeah. Well, I like to look at this as this, is that if we don't get it done in this fiscal year, it goes back into the general fund, and we can take money out of there should we have to for one of these projects. Right? You know what I'm saying? 'Cause that's not money we anticipated being there, it just kinda folds back in.
Right.
So we could do that if necessary. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, the, what's the difference of re-appropriating it for next year?
What do you mean, what's the difference? Oh, yeah, if you wanna do a project, you could include it and have it appropriated for next year as a project, right?
I'm just saying, you have, it's a win-win, I mean, but, you know, if we, oops, I have the dean's entering again, sorry. If we are budgeting 135, and last year, I can't remember, I'm not looking at it, it's 125 or 135, whatever it was, I'm just saying that, okay, we, there's no problem, but that will go back to our general fund, which makes it a healthier general fund by 125,000, since we haven't used any of that money.
Yeah, but you're saying we would, if we needed to use it, we would pull from it for next year, I just, I don't know, it, it sounds like we're budgeting on the margins, like, oh, if we need to, we'll pull money out of the general fund, then why wouldn't, why not just put it in the budget?
That way, I just thought we were, I, you know, I was hoping we were, we were concerned last week about some of these projects, we were hoping to use some of it for soon.
Oh, I'd love to, I just, based on how quickly we're able to get that RFP out, and it hasn't been out yet, do I really think that they're gonna be able to figure out how to fix any of those things and get it done for the end of the fiscal year?
I just know we talked about projects and whether we had any money in there to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is, yes, if we're able to get it done this year, the money's there, that's awesome. I just, I, at this rate, I highly doubt that we're gonna be able to get it done this year, so I-
Well, you have to remember one other thing, you moved 70,000 last year from the general fund into the sewer fund, because we were tight in the sewer fund, so you have 70,000 less in your general fund than you did, this is just the unallocated, you know, what's not allocated for this year's budget is less than what we had last year because of that, it's not, we're gonna pay it back to the sewer fund, and we haven't had a billing yet, but it's, we don't bill until the 1st of April, but it's this year, I'm sure it's gonna be tight due to everything that's been going on in no fair, and, you know, all that.
Catherine, could you explain that again? I have no idea what you just said.
What part did you miss? What am I-
I didn't miss anything, I didn't understand any of it.
At the end of last year, at the end of last year, the board approved the $70,000 transfer from the general fund into the sewer fund, because we were short. So therefore, there's $70,000 less in the unappropriated fund balance in the general fund than when we looked at it last year. I'm just, I just don't wanna see you spending things twice, that's all I'm trying to bring up, that, that, you know, you're talking about some other projects, and you still have some money in reserves that you can use, that the board can look at, if you're looking at specific projects, but as far as the general fund is gone, you have to be careful how much you're spending there, that's all. I just wanna make you aware of that.
I'm not looking to spend, I know, like, he had a list of projects that somewhere this year, I'm trying to see what was included for the new draft, just to see, all right, do we have to cut some funds here and there? I mean, I said all of you thoughts, that if we need to find funds for things that have to be done in this next year, you know, we can maybe change things around a little, that's where I was coming from with the notes I sent you.
Do we need to return 70,000 to the general fund, even though we appropriated it last year?
I talked, I talked to audit control about that the other day, you can move that money over there permanently to the sewer fund, you don't have to pay it back.
Gotcha.
But that would be, you'll have to keep in mind that that's was for a shortfall for last year, and it hasn't been remedied, so I'm just trying to make you aware that we don't know what's gonna happen this year again with the sewer fund, 'cause we haven't raised any, anything yet, so we haven't raised any revenues yet. So it's, you know, we have to be aware of that, that's all.
Does anybody have questions about any of the three funds and some of the changes that were made? I know, I gave you just a scenario of a A and B on some of the salary adjustments I was looking for originally, which was included, or which are still included. I was just trying to think if case, you know, we needed to be careful of these margins, as she was just, as Catherine was just talking about, you know, would you want to, I threw out a Plan B, which cut that, those adjustments just by a little, but I, you know, the difference was about, I think it was 3,000 and change. I didn't know if you were interested in that, I mean, I'm open to anything, it was just a thought, I was trying to find a Plan B.
I had a question about that, actually, is, these salaries, are they only on the general fund, or are they split up?
No, all three, all three accounts, yeah.
So that's just one thing to think about as we're grappling with the sewer fund, is increased salary leads to more stress on the sewer and water fund.
Yep.
Unless, are we able to adjust the percentages on the different funds?
I asked Jeff about that, Jeff, you said it was pretty much on the way it is actually, it's pretty much, it's right where it should be right now, is my right, Jeff?
As far as the sewer, it is, that's pretty spot on.
It's based on their effort, basically, how much time they spend on sewer work.
Yeah, we've got one guy in the sewer full-time, and then one of the, the last new hire works there off and on, because he's eventually gonna take that test, so he, he works with Nick in the sewer plant, but those, that payroll is pretty much spot on.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, I, I think either way, those adjustments are positive, I just was trying to save a little if necessary, but I don't know if it's enough, you know, if that Plan B was something you'd be interested in when I was working that out. I also was trying to keep, you know, those positions competitive with our surrounding areas, too, we hadn't done that in so long, that was-
That was, that was my concern, was the, the $1.50 an hour approach is what was recommended by Jeff, correct? And that's what was, that was reflected in the budget initially, based on that, right?
The original budget's based on, Jeff, Larry, and I met, I'd say in the, I don't know, maybe around December, November, December, and discussed this, and, and I made some calls to other municipal area, just trying to see what the rates are for similar positions, and granted, we can't meet all the big areas, but we still have to be competitive, and even our starting wage has just been, you know, a very low wage for that position, for, you know, when we hire somebody in those positions.
Right, so, I mean, that's why I, I didn't have a, well, we have to balance a budget, but I didn't really have a concern of trying to address the recommended adjustments, primarily for that reason, to try to be as competitive we can, as small as we are, which, so I would hesitate backing down from what I think the trial budget is carrying.
No, I'm okay with that, I, that's what I, I was just trying to do my part to.
So can I ask something, Carrie? Maybe you know something that I don't, or that I missed, 'cause I just opened this document up today, is the, the budget that was sent out Sunday includes all the updates we requested from the last budget meeting, which was mostly the, the retirement, right? It includes, sorry, it's hard to hear you, something like that.
Yes, that's about right, yep.
Okay, what, what do we look like overall? Like, are we way over being balanced compared to past years? Like, you came up with a lot of suggestions to save money, which makes me think that are we in bad shape, and we need to be looking to cut money, or are we?
Well, and Catherine, I'm gonna have you do the over, the whole look of that for the years, I was just knowing, I was just going on our conversation to come in here in case we needed to, all, you know, emails have been going back and forth about just being careful, making sure we have enough here in this fund and that fund, and it gets, gets me thinking, okay, where could I save if I had to, and I wasn't happy, there was not a lot of places to go, we've cut back.
That's what I'm asking, do we have to?
I don't know, so Catherine, how is the overall, as far as the balancing of this in the end, with what's in here now?
The general fund is okay, all right, the general fund is okay, even though you've transferred money, at the end of last year's annual report, it showed we had 329,000 at the end of last year that had to go for this year's budget, which we've known in the past, we don't usually reach that, of course, the, the Crowns House was in there, and also the firehouse repair, so that makes it look higher also, even though we haven't done anything with that, and hopefully some of it will go this year's budget, but the water fund, I think, is okay as far as we have the logging coming in, and we also have the towers that are bringing in about $18,000 in income, so I, I think we'll be able to get by as a water fund, it's also gonna be tight, but it has been tight for the last few years. But the sewer fund is, does need, it does need, we have to, we have to increase the rents.
I got, I got sewer fund, you don't have to remind us every couple minutes, I got the sewer fund, but overall, the, the general fund, you're saying is not out of whack with how we've done the past few years?
Right.
It's not like we're looking to exceed the tax cap by 12% or something, right?
No, 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 everything is, we're, I, well, then again, Nick, we don't know with COVID, we, I don't know what's gonna happen with sales tax. I've tried and tried to call people and talk to them about how this sales tax revenue depreciate, you know, is gonna affect it, but of course, now with the, with the COVID relief package being cleared, there's money coming back in, so we have no idea, hopefully, hopefully, everything is fine as far as, as the general fund goes, even though, who knows?
Yeah, so, yeah, so my, my opinion is then, like, there's, we saw the sales tax drop and then bounce back, and we've always been really conservative with sales tax.
Right.
We do have this, you know, rescue plan coming in, which could be great, but, you know, I don't, I don't wanna count on it until it hits our bank account, right?
Right.
So in my mind, I'm not, I'm not too anxious to start cutting all these things, I think it was the same thing Dean was just saying, I think that the increases and the things that we put in there from our last budget workshop were thoughtful, were things that, that we need, and I'm okay with leaving it where it is, again, totally understand the sewer fund, we have to do something about it, maybe that means we do have to cut something to make up for that, but I guess the answer I heard was, we don't need to be looking to shave X number of dollars to, to balance the budget at this point.
Right, I agree.
So, yeah, and again, I sent that email today about the stimulus monies, I mean, does anyone know how real that is? I mean, the article said $1.3 million to the village of Altima, that, I don't know where they got that from. Well, there was an article a couple of weeks ago, when the, when the, the bill was still being discussed, that had an even lower number, and that was from Senator, or not Senator, Congressman Tonco's office, so, I don't know, I kinda believe it, I mean, $1.9 trillion, you know, every little, every little person's gonna get a little something, that's-
That's a lot of money.
That's our village's share, I guess. But again, that's, and again, you're right, Nick, I don't know how real it is, or how soon that is, but if that is a real number, that's half our budget. Yeah, and, and I think, I was thinking about this after your, your note, and I think I messaged Carrie like two weeks ago when I first saw it. I would rather not count on it, maybe that helps us bail out the sewer fund if it comes in, maybe that's something that we can use to really jumpstart some of the big projects we've been dragging our feet on, like the dam, or, you know, that, that's a big dent in making an interconnect to the Gildan Water District, right? Or at least gives us a contribution.
I agree with you, Nick, you never count on money.
Go ahead, John.
I agree with you, Nick, you never count on money unless you actually have it on hand. So we continue on with the budget currently, and this does go through, then, like you said, we can go forward with other projects that we wouldn't have the money for it this year, or we could, we had to a lot save up for another following year.
Yeah, I think the only thing it helps, it helps me a little bit with the uncertainty of, like, sales tax, right? So sales tax might be down on the order of, what, tens of thousands of dollars or something?
I don't think it'd be down that much, but, yeah.
Right, okay, my point is, if we, if we might be down $10,000 here, but there might be $1.3 million here, I'll be able to sleep tonight.
Yeah.
And the reason, the reason I asked is, and I agree with both of you, that you can't count your chickens till they hatch, but if that is a fair reality, even if it's nowhere near $1.3 million, but substantial, the reason I was concerned about it is we're tweaking, we're reducing, we're not counting on it, what happens when we get it? You know, suddenly, suddenly we have $1 million hidden against a budget of $2.6 million, or whatever it is. Are the taxpayers gonna push back and say, okay, give me a tax comp, which may be a thing to do? That's why I was asking, is suddenly, maybe not this year, or halfway through next year's budget, upcoming budget, we're sitting on an S state, we don't have to do it, even paying down some of these other things. Yeah, I hesitate to say we don't know what to do with it, I think we could easily spend it, I mean, you look, what's our, our income from, from taxes, it's, it's like $100,000 or something? Oh, it's like $300,000.
$308,000.
Yeah, so we, we could refund taxes for like almost five years with that kind of money, I don't think that's- Yeah, right, so, the thing, I, I don't have the budget in front of me, I didn't get a chance to do it, but looking at Carrie's synopsis she sent out,
That, my synopsis was-
I mean, just, yeah, I mean, just to continue the discussions on those items, to try to maybe, at least put those, that, and this, again, just my take to jumpstart things, even though we started. I personally don't have an issue with the suggestion of maybe holding to last year's number for the library, I don't, I love, you know, always the ability for us to increase the library, but that makes sense to me. As we already talked about, I'm more comfortable leaving the, the suggested salaries and adjustments for everybody per what Jeff had talked through last meeting. The Crowns House, that makes sense, if we now think the whole thing can come down without as much abate, internal abatement costs, and we can do it for 50, maybe that is a source of revenue that can slide over. Yeah, I agree with that one. You know, and then the reserve funds, let me see, let me try to understand this.
I, and let me, by your-
Yeah, why don't you explain that a little bit more?
I'm not, I was not looking to cut the reserve funds, it was one of those things that we talked about, the sewer fund so much in the last two weeks, through emails and such, that, and then, you know, and then we're talking about the ultraviolet, you know, equipment that we refer to, which is being recommended for us, that could cost, you know, so much money, we're not even sure at this time, I was just trying to figure out ways, all right, if we had to, to put money in that sewer fund, do that, make it more efficient, maybe bring costs down, then, you know, it was just all of that. So again, I'm not pushing for any of these, I just thought I brought some ideas out there in case we decide, hey, we probably should do something, here are some ideas, but no, I'm not looking to stop the reserve funds, like-
Right, so, so, but if I see the paragraph, we're, we're sitting, we're, we're carrying 135,000, pretty much like we did last year in this proposed budget, but we're still sitting on roughly $125,000 out of this 2021 budget, right, is that what, is that what you're saying in that?
That is, that is the state of, that we're in right now.
Okay, so, but, right. Yeah, I guess we could use some of, if there's some short-term things that are ready to go, we could obviously consider, continue to use the residual of this year's budget for things like Jeff was talking about, might as well, if they're ready to go, like the roofing or whatever else.
Sidewalk in Orsini Park?
Well, I think that's a separate number, though, already.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but more, more of the things that maybe aren't specifically designated yet. I say all this, 'cause I'm a little, we have to be careful, and again, Carrie, you're right, you weren't suggesting dumping it. We are gonna have to do something in the firehouse, whether we like the numbers or not, I mean, we're on borrowed time, it's not dire, but it, we're on borrowed time with that facade. You know, and if it's gonna cost us $200,000, which is unfathomable to me, you know, we've gotta make sure we have it available to take care of, and I think sooner than better, I mean, we would probably need to jumpstart either with VNL, or some other engineer has been suggested to move that along for this budget. Or we do something differently, and we just stabilize. That's just an architect talking, that I don't want falling down on somebody. Yeah, I totally agree, I think that with 125 or 135 that's in there, that wasn't enough to do the facade, but I'd like to think that's enough, and we've talked about this before, to stabilize, to maybe do some stabilization to the floor, like a couple little projects that buy us another five, 10 years to figure out what's the long-term solution for that. Well, and, and not to get the weeds or micromanage, but what happened with the floor? I thought that was kind of a separate thing that they were looking at. It was, again, I, we brought them in to look at the firehouse, they looked at the facade, they looked at the floor, they looked at, I think we talked about the apron, had the apron had like some potholes right in front of the garage door, and I think there was one other thing, I think above where 1-6 is, the bricks are like bowing out above the bay. That's, that's the basis of the concern, right, yeah. Yeah, and well, then the, so anyways, we're supposed to come up with solutions for that, and then, before they left, I had them look at the Crowns House, and they ended up working on the Crowns House RFP first. It was one of those things where I wasn't really happy with the pace that things were getting done, and I didn't think me asking them to do two projects at once was gonna make either of them happen faster. So I'm trying to get one thing done, and then we'll try to get another thing done, so hopefully this RFP business is done, and then I can bring them back and really. Because-
The Crowns House is, is condemned now, correct? I saw that from the email, so we're not gonna pay for the, the special payment?
No, you still have to pay for the abatement, but it's a lot less expensive to do it, it's basically a whole demo, as opposed to abating and then demo, which I think-
So you, you demo it during the abation process, you're, you're gonna be, during that time?
Yeah, you don't have to abate, which obviously is slow, and pick everything off, it's abatable to go to a separate infill, now, since the building is condemned, as I understand it, it's not very efficient, but the entire building goes to it. That's the variance that we're requesting. Yeah. We're requesting permission from Department of Labor to let us do that, based on the fact that the building is condemned.
And then the floor for the firehouse, you're referring to that long crack that goes, I mean, it, I forget what fire, was it? I forget what truck it is, but this is-
It's the middle bay, yeah, it's the middle bay.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's one issue with the floor, the, the one that we were actually looking at is, in where 1-6 is, where the new fire truck is, when that truck backs in, the floor actually sinks down quite a bit, and then pops back up, which I don't think floors, like concrete floors are supposed to do, so.
Probably not.
Well, it hasn't, that's a crack, so, you know, it hasn't cracked. It hasn't cracked. So, don't, you know, yeah, again, not to micromanage, but, but is there a way for us to try to use some of the 125 of this year's budget to get some of that done, and basically- Oh, yeah, that, that was the whole plan, I just, again, we started the RFP process last year, the thing still hasn't been issued yet, so, do I really think that they can come up with a solution and bid it, or get people under contract and get it done by the end of the fiscal year? I'm pessimistic, I guess, I'd love for it to happen, but I just don't know if it will. And then what happens, again, if it still comes back way more expensive than we think? Maybe not, you and I need to talk offline, 'cause I have another young, small structural engineering company. uh, young, small structural engineering company that I might, you know, might, some of the look at and crank that out and use.
You know what? Yeah, let's talk about that. I mean, maybe that's what I have to do, even to put some screws on on these guys, is look.
Right.
If I have money, it expires at the end of the fiscal year, what can we get done? And maybe that will help us get things done.
So, and anyway, just, I'm sorry, just to finish up on um Carrie's list, which was very helpful. Um, the fire department, I I would, I would tend to agree with the suggestion, we just keep it as we have in the current budget, as far as the numbers for this year, you know, given, given all the issues that every municipality has issue.
No, I I'm fine with it. I was just, like I said, we're looking for places. Um, but if we're happy with, you know, the general fund, it's not in danger of having an issue, and we'll work on the sewer fund through different avenues as we go forward, because we said we have to talk about that anyway. Um, down the road, it's not, you know, the budget and number, that's fine. Um, the tax cap issue, I don't know how you all feel about that, and obviously it's worked into this, but I don't know. Um, you know.
What do you mean it's worked into this?
Well, the, the up to the cap increase is worked into this draft, the current.
To reduce the amount of reserves transferred, right?
How how much extra did that pull in by raising taxes?
Eight thousand, eight thousand more.
That's, that's a good point, Nick, is to know what that working number is, yeah.
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
It was 300,093 this past year. Now, if if you go with the 2% cap, it that it worked out to 308,930, something like.
All right, so.
But again, if you, go ahead, Nick, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I I I had, my wife will kill me, I understand the whole concept of minding your pain, right? But I I would propose lowering the firehouse repair line from like 135 to 120, and leaving the fire department equipment line where it is, and not raising the taxes.
Well, there's also the Crown's, there's also half the Crown's House allocation too.
Well, I think, I think lowering the Crown's House is a separate issue that helps with the sewer, but I I don't know, I I I think what we save or what we gain from reducing uh fire department equipment by 5,000, which is really only 2,500 when we split it with Gilderland, and and what we gained by raising taxes during a pandemic is probably not worth it.
No, it, but we had to have her put it in to look at.
I got it. That's my motion or proposal, I guess.
I can take it out.
Yeah, I I would, I would, I would suggest, request, motion, I don't know what other adjective. Not raise taxes and not cut the equipment line. If if we have to make it up somewhere, I I'm okay with lowering the call, lowering the line for firehouse repairs. I'd like to think we can get some of it done, maybe not all of it, and so as long as most of it's there, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with cutting the Crown's House line, because I think that just makes sense no matter what. And then, you know, a- again, if overall we are good where we are, I don't wanna touch it too much.
Um.
So, you want me to take the Crown's House line out altogether?
That's my proposal, I'm just one person.
No, I I mean, I put it out there for that reason, because I I do think um we will have, you know, we have the money now that we're dealing with on that line, so I I do believe we'll be okay there.
Well, but that, but that depends on whether or not we can get this work done before the end of this fiscal year, right?
That's true too, but.
Isn't that, isn't that why the 50,000 is carried in next year's budget?
Well, I I have higher hopes that the Crown's House will get done before firehouse repairs gets done, but maybe.
No, but I mean, it's, but it has to be done in this fiscal year too, which is June, right? So.
So, Nick, what do you think, if you had to give a percentage out of getting the Crown's House, you know, done or moving forward? You think it's, what, 65% by the end of the fiscal year that we have a chance of getting it done?
I I don't like making predictions, because I'm always wrong, but uh.
You have such a positive attitude about yourself, Nick, it's great.
Really, really awesome.
Well, the RFP, the RFP hasn't gone out yet, we're still in the prep stages, right?
And I I don't know what that's waiting on either, so that's my frustration again with that engineer, but, I don't know, that that Dean, maybe, maybe you ought to give your expert opinion, but in my mind, once the 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 waiver or the exception or whatever DOL calls it goes through, the RFP should be pretty straightforward.
Right.
Might as well, Carter, right?
Yep, and even the bidding, even the bidding.
How long can that take?
Yeah, but isn't there a fast track, because I used to work for labor and do RFPs, and there used to be, I don't know if if that's changed, but there used to be a fast track based upon whether labor approved it and approved um to um expedite it. I don't think expedite's right.
The problem with expediting is it's almost too fast, and we worry about that.
Not the word, that's not the word, what's the word?
Uh, well, there's.
They just wanted to escalate it.
There's two, there were two options that when you submit the, I can't, I came up with variants, maybe, when you submit the variants, there were two options. One is a fast tracker expedited, where you'll get an, you'll get an answer in like days, but you have to get it done in like six weeks, like your your window is very short. And then the other one is you get an answer within two weeks, but you have up to a year to to do it, and so.
So, we're looking at getting it completed by June, correct? Or do we have to have the RFP approved and in place by June, and the work can be done after the fiscal year, if we nail down that RFP prior to June?
The way it usually works with with public contracts, at least in the state, the world I live in, if the contract, if the contracts are signed.
Then we're good.
The end of the fiscal year, you can apply the previous fiscal year's monies to completing the project.
Okay.
That's the key, you have to have a contract signed prior to the end of the fiscal year.
I mean, because it could take, right, Nick, it could take up to like eight weeks after you submit. So, once you get the engineer to give you his.
But it, it's already in submission, they're already working on it.
Oh, all right, well, then you.
So, the idea, the idea is we're trying to get the variants before going out to RFP, so that when we go out to RFP, we're already approved. We're already approved to take the whole thing down. It's not like we're asking the bidders to have to go through that process.
All right.
Which makes it more, it makes it more attractive.
Yeah, my apologies, I missed the the order. I thought that we hadn't submitted it and we're waiting on a variant.
Submitted the variants, the RFP bid document is not out yet, which might be waiting on the the answer from DOL, I guess.
Right, DOL, yeah. I mean, the bid period could be a week, I mean, it's this, th- these are specialized contractors, and it's a very small project, they should they should sort of the bid period of one week, maybe two weeks, just to be a little bit of a buffer. And it won't even take a week to do the work, once it's authorized.
Again, I I'm not that kind of engineer, but that seems reasonable to me. That's why I'm okay with taking it out of next year's budget. The the problem with the firehouse repairs is, we don't even know what we would do, we don't know how we would do it, who we're gonna ask to do it, you know, any of that stuff yet.
And you're in mid-March, I get it, okay. Sorry about that, guys, I just wanted to.
It's fun.
Free back, so what I'm hearing is that we're looking at keeping taxes flat and making the adjustment of the Crown's House, taking that line out right now? And is there any, and keeping um the rest of the lines where they are, you know, in the draft, keeping them all consistent?
So, that that means keeping the the salary increases that we talked about, where you originally talked about it? Right?
Right.
I'm looking at the PDF, so I don't have, I don't know if you're nodding your head. Crown's House, I'm going through your letter, right? So, the salary adjustments, how, we talked about it last time. Crown's House comes out, reserve funds we leave alone, fire department equipment we leave alone, and library we keep where it is.
Which is a thousand dollars less than they requested, correct?
Which I think is, like, again, what we did last year, right?
Yeah, it's the standard.
I just have one question. I did uh reduce the Schilling uh Park line from 5,000 to 1,000, was that right? I know we had a discussion last time, but I wasn't sure whether.
I think Jeff talked about that, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you say you want it down to 1,000? Because I, that was another 4,000 dollars.
Talk about that, and I know Nick actually even said, well, hey, if we do some of these things, maybe we can get what we needed. But Jeff, um, somebody uh was talking to me about the, you know, the actual, what's it called, the pavilion, I'd say, at Schilling Park, that it might need some, um, I don't know, upkeep on it, paint, et cetera. Would it be better to put some of that money back there and kind of try to get the swings in that as well at 5,000? Or um would you, you know, I don't, or just not?
Uh, we said last, last meeting that uh we were gonna hold off on that and give it a year.
Right, for the price.
Yeah, and then we're going to uh, oh, put the extra uh, extra kids uh swing in the Bozenkill.
Right, which I think we could.
With the same. We're gonna use the same apparatus, but change the seats or something, change one seat.
Right.
But you still have, you still have 5,000 dollars in there for this year, that hasn't been used, so that that can be used this year.
Yeah, we can. Let's leave it at 1,000, are you guys good with that?
Yeah, because, I mean, I I'm guessing, I don't know what they told you, but, you know, that gazebo is not that old, so it probably just needs paint.
I, yeah, I I haven't seen it myself, so it was just, I'm just asking, I haven't been over there to really look at it. I know there were some issues with carpenter bees and such, so that came up, and I just want to make sure, you know, that we had enough to do that, and, you know, that could be another account. That's all, I would just add.
Again, if there's, if there's 5,000 dollars available in this current budget, depends on Jeff's schedule, but um, maybe that can be addressed under this budget.
I've given him quite a list, so. Every other day, when I call him at 7 o'clock, I'm surprised in the morning, I'm surprised he picks it up anymore.
All right, so we're good with the general fund then?
I think so.
So, Catherine, with the, with the reduction, with the elimination of the Crown's House number alone, that should allow, more than allow, not having to do any sort of tax cap.
Right, right, and I I'll make the um, I'll adjust it, so you can see what the fund balance need would be um at this time, so.
Right.
Be- before we move on from the general fund, did we include a 2% COLA in here or no?
Did.
For the ones, for the ones that weren't getting the raises, right?
Okay, just trying to make sure.
Right.
All right, I'm good.
There are only three adjustments, and the rest are the COLAs, or the COLA applies to everybody else. So, that's already worked into the numbers.
Uh, keep in mind, it just, um, oh, boy, what's his name? Oh, Lucas Oliver gets a thousand dollar longevity this coming year, uh, that's just figured in hi- his salary also. He's been here 15 years, the coming up, so.
Kudos to him.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm, I'm 16 years, so do I get?
No.
You you got a cupcake, Dean, all right?
I got a cupcake.
Cupcake.
Please go, please, I have a lot of.
Um, anything, Jeff, that you have, that you want us to look at, or are you good, with your funds or?
No, I I pretty much covered everything that last meeting.
Yeah, I just didn't know if over the week we changed anything, okay.
No, I don't think so.
I had one more question for Jeff, sort of, and it kind of goes into what we're talking about with engineers. Um, we have, I think it's 2,500 on a line for engineering costs. Um, and Dean, maybe you can speak to this. If we're looking more at the, you know, at these different projects, especially the firehouse, are we gonna need a little bit more in there, just on that line for consult?
Yeah, that's a good question. I I would tend, I'm assuming that that line is for things that come up incidental, engineering needs that, you know, particularly Jeff needs, or something like that. Um, for any sort of major work, like the facade, that probably should be part of the numbers. For the facade, you you build a, build a, the fees into that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Well, I get that.
Not that, not that the 135,000 is carrying that, but but that's how we actually did it when we paid them, when we paid B and L the last round.
Right. I just feel like you can have you come look at things, you know, would that be enough money for those kinds of things?
No, yeah, I think that line, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think that line is more for incidental um hourly rate kind of things, not capital projects.
Right, right, right. Okay. All right, just wanted to check for sure. Um, you know, I'm good with those adjustments, I don't know if anybody has anything else they wanted to change or talked about changing. We, good? All right, um, so Catherine, and maybe Patty as well, I think you're there, Patty.
I'm here.
You're there. So, if we make these adjustments, we generally, have we, generally don't have it approved them at a third meeting on the 17th? Or do we do we usually just checking it? I think we've checked them, you know, when they've sent out to us to check the numbers one more time, because of course, we have the April 6th to go over it as well with the public. So, are we good not to meet next week, do you feel, Catherine and Patty and everybody?
Well, we still have one more thing to talk about.
Is it the sewer fund?
It has a sewer fund, yes. I'm sorry, you have to.
No, 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 I I'm not disagree with you.
I, I, I tried to explain it in the, it's very difficult to discuss this thing through emails, because I don't know if you understand, we're working with the books, what they're they're talking about, but the auditor has called me from the controller's office after this year's annual report went in, and you know, from last year, and said, you're sure in your sewer fund? And I said, yes, we are going to be discussing this with our budget, and we're going to be, you know, we have to. And how they know that is they look at, when I have to put the annual report in, it's put in um what we have in our accounts, and then we have to put in the budget for next year. And because the budget for next year is, the fund balance that we need is greater than with the cash that we have in there, then they come back and they say, you don't have enough money in that account to cover, that's how they know. So, when I discussed this with them, they said, I said, yes, we're aware of it, we're gonna be working on that. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is, we don't have to have the public hearing on it now, but if we put the figure into the um, into the sewer fund, so that it's showing what we ho- hope to bring in in rents, and it lowers the fund balance, then we're balanced with our cash in that line. That's why I'm trying to emphasize this, it's it's difficult, it's easier to show it to you on paper than it is to try to describe it to you, but my point being, we do need to address this. My recommendation was to increase that line in the sewer fund rents, so that your fund balance is lower, and then we, for one thing, we know what we need to raise. And number two, I don't know how you want to do it, because you want to discuss, you know, um, usage and all that kind of things, whatever way you discuss it, this is how much we have to bring in. So, hopefully, we get money from the the COVID relief package, that maybe we can look at that also, but I'm just saying, for this present budget of what we're coming into now, we we do have to address that in your sewer fund budget for the coming year, so.
But.
Did everybody understand what I was?
Really? But can we actually imply, for lack of a better word, covering it by anticipating increased rates, when we can't increase rates until the next cycle?
Oh, you could increase rates once you have a public hearing. You could increase rates for October. Once you have a public hearing, you don't need to re- have the public hearing for your budget, but you need to increase it, to order to increase the rates in October and next April, you would have to have a public hearing to do that, and you're gonna have to, because there's no, you know, no other, there's no other revenue for those, that fund, so.
Yeah, so.
You know, there's people that are building, and you're gonna be bringing money in that way, but we have no idea, we already have a line there that's, we estimate.
Catherine, I I do understand all the things you're saying, but I mean, I think the concern is, can we count on a law that we haven't passed yet? And I I'm inclined to say that we can, the, I think the budget is a planning document, and.
Right.
You know, you know, nothing, when we say we budgeted 50,000 dollars for the Crown's House, and we didn't spend it, like, nothing bad happened, because that was just our spending plan.
Right.
So, you know, if we don't, if we don't pass the law, you know, we're gonna be up a creek without a paddle, so, I don't know, I I get what you're saying, I understand everybody's kind of reluctance to count on something that we haven't actually had a public hearing or passed or decided on yet. But I, I I think we probably should talk about it.
I think my biggest concern is that because the controller's office has brought this to our attention, if they find that it goes back in again to the, they'll probably flag an audit for us. And then if they come in with the controller's audit, then that, then, then they will have a document that you have in your Altamont Enterprise and your other papers as to, you know, I I think it would be better for for the whole budget process to at least have it in there that you know that these funds need to come to, we have to do something in that fund. And we're not gonna be able to borrow from the general fund much longer, that's my concern, especially if you start spending for other things like the firehouse facade, which is coming in more than what we had planned, and, you know, some other things that you're, you're not gonna have the money there in the general fund to make it up, so that's my concern. So that's my concern, so.
But I guess I'm very confused on how we represent that in this current, this coming budget to show that we're addressing it. I guess I'm, I'm lost on how.
Put under the, you would put under the sewer rents. My, my suggestion to you was be another ninety thousand dollars, is which, which would bring you up to where your rents are covering your expenses. And you would only need like twenty-two thousand from your fund balance to make, to balance your budget. You've got to have a balanced budget, so.
Ninety thousand, the ninety thousand dollars is the rough kick that was talked about, but only for next six month cycle, right? Not for an entire.
The ninety thousand dollars would have to come from then, October and April of next year's cycle.
Right, yeah, we're saying the same thing, okay.
But the, but Catherine, here's one thing I don't underst, one, one thing I don't understand is that uh if we make the change between now and October, that catches it for October and it catches it for next April, but next April's bill doesn't help fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, does it?
Yes, yeah, because the twenty-two budget ends uh, uh, May thirty-first of um twenty-two.
Okay, so we, we just get it in time.
Right.
Right, yes, right, that's a good question though, Nick, I didn't understand that either.
Yeah. And uh.
Okay, so, and thank you Catherine, I understand what you're, what you're saying is, is what you want to represent the budget.
Right.
I think everybody, you know, I think that's where I was coming up with things where we, you know, if we had to move some money and things like that because frankly, some of the suggestions as far as the, you know, whatever you want to call it, the debt payment and stuff, I just thought the amount that was being suggested, that's gonna hurt especially seniors and some people in our village. I thought it was um.
Well, it's fifty-five dollars a month, or fifty-five dollars every six months, and that's ten dollars a month, Carrie.
Uh, additionally, you said.
Fifty-five, it was, we have forty-five now. It'd be another fifty-five, so it would, you're talking another ten dollars a month. So I, I don't, I, I don't know what else you're gonna do, really.
Yes.
That was a little, yeah, the number seemed like a big jump to me too, Carrie, but if you look at it that way, it's ten dollars a month.
And we haven't raised it in how many years?
Right.
Sewer treatment plant was upgraded, so that was seven, six, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, seven years ago, so. And I, you know, just the history of the people that weren't on the board at that time, the reason that it was, that was very conservative at that time. We probably should have made it higher than it was, but because of the O and M, we had no idea how much of a savings we were gonna get with the new plant. They were trying to be conservative as to how to, you know, make it as, as affordable for the residents as they possibly could at the time. And it, we tried that and we, we've also, you know, moved money from the general fund to the sewer fund twice um to help compensate for that, but we really, you really need to.
What was the, what was the, what was the, Catherine, what was the bump? It was forty-five dollar bump, wasn't it, something like that?
Yeah, it was forty-five dollars and it showed under the debt service, so it was uh, you know.
Carrie, unfortunately, whenever anybody else talks, you, you go like completely silent, we can't hear anything you're saying. So I feel like you were trying to say something earlier.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not saying anything.
Well, so the, the question was if we don't do this, what else would we do?
Well, I, I mean, I know one of the things that you talked about at one time was, you know, looking at, like, we talked about rates. We talked about this last year, as far as, you know, do you change rates or gallon usage or something like that? Again, because if the increase, and you know, you're showing uh, like, say sludge removal that have, you know, increased so much, um, do you do that on the, you know, change the rates so people are paying increases based on the size of their facility? Um, I know, yes, everyone uses the sewage plant, we're all using it, so, you know, making it all the same seems very equal. But if it's covering things that are costing more that really depend on the size of your family, is that something we should look at and what would that bring it, like, what would it be and what would it bring in? So that should have.
Well, the only problem with changing rates is that you're going to change the water. It's based on the water usage. So you're, you're gonna wind up raising the water usage in.
Right.
You know, you're gonna have to do it by percentages of the sewer fund. Right now it's a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five percent every time, but you'd have to raise those.
And tied to that, tied to that, Carrie, is, as much as that seems more equitable as a concept, this discussion is because people are using less water. So is it really gonna catch us up um instead of a flat rate of, okay, ten dollars a month?
Well, I, I looked at it this way when I was, when I was trying to explain it to myself of, should it be a flat rate or should it be a usage? And correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we're putting it on debt service, the idea is, once the debt is paid off, we won't need this money anymore. Is that right, Catherine?
That's right.
So that, that in my mind means that it shouldn't be a usage because we don't put a debt service on a, a, a gallon usage because then it's there forever, right?
Right.
That, that, that's, I think, what convinced me that it makes sense to do it this way. That no matter how much you're putting on there, if the computer or some sort of electronic gizmo in the system is breaking, everybody needs that gizmo fixed, no matter how much they use it. If they flush the toilet one day, once a day or twelve times a day, right?
Well, and this, and that, to the next point, the reason that, even for your chart, Nick, the reason that we're under this, this dilemma is because maintenance is outpacing income, or maintenance is the system, it's not.
Not usage, that's what I'm saying, Nick, if it was chemicals, if it was just sludge, then I could, I could understand that maybe it should be a basis of usage. But it's the things that are breaking that we're finding out are more expensive to replace or were replacing more earlier than we thought.
Yeah, and, and not, not that it wasn't money that people didn't want to spend, but I don't recall a lot of pushback with the forty-five dollar increase in, in two thousand fourteen.
No, really, we, we were very surprised there wasn't much pushback at that time. It was, well, there was a lot of, there was a lot of news media at that time also, what was being done in the upgrade and all that type of thing. So I think people knew where it was, what it was gonna be used for, you know.
Well, and maybe that's the same task that is taken, is the fact that we need to catch up with maintenance. I mean, that's really what this, we need to catch up.
Well, and catch up to the debt service, what it's actually costing us, because it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for the principal and the interest, which we did not have before two thousand thirteen, fourteen. So that's a, that's a big chunk of your sewer.
Yeah, that, that's one thing I think that, that it might be more complicated to try to explain of this whole, it's debt service, but the reason is because of this, like, I, I think the, the message ought to be, and I think it's, it's accurate and it's true that it's costing more to, to do the upkeep than we thought it was going to.
Right.
Right, that's, that's clear, that's not like we're, we're trying to do anything fancy. We're not trying to, to, to make a lot of money or nothing, anybody's getting, get rich off of sludge removal, right? It's needed and we need to.
Only guy that drives a truck.
All the users.
Yeah. And that, that's basically true because the debt, we, we were hoping the savings from the O and M would help pay for the debt and that, that is not what happened.
Yeah, it's just, it's harder to, to explain, we, we can barely understand it, Catherine.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. It's, it's not easy.
I guess as far as your budget then, it's like the idea will then be floated out to the public in the middle of the summer at some point and we'll have that, you know, we'll deal with it at that time with the law. I mean, we, that's all we can do.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing to, to remember too is I think it makes sense to put that in the budget. And if this one point three million comes through and the board thinks that maybe some of that money should go towards paying the, the debt service in lieu of raising rates, that's another option too, right?
That's right, yeah, that, that would be a good idea, yeah.
Doesn't work that completely.
I can't, you, you're cutting out when people talk.
I don't know who's talking, but um, all I could say is I, I have had some contact with Congressman Tonco's office the last two days. Um, they're working on letting me know exactly what, how this is gonna be. It does not get paid all at once, it's partial this year, partial the following year. It could be just on specific items in the municipality, so. And water and sewer is a big one of them, but how it's applied, we'll have to wait and see because there were some examples. And I don't know if debt service is one of them, I don't believe, I think it's more for projects and um there, there's some specifics, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I looked at it and it was uh not what I thought exactly, but still good if it comes, you know, so.
Well, one of the things that Jeff had brought up last time was the UV uh system, it was a hundred thousand dollars. And that actually, he said, would help with costs of chemicals. So, you know, that might be one to, to look at at this time if there is money coming in for something specific like that, so.
Yeah, he and I were crossing our fingers for that.
Yeah.
So, so remind me though, so the trial budget is carrying the additional ninety thousand dollars?
Not right now, I didn't put it in that way, but that's, I will if you want me to.
Right, we, we need to make it, make a decision.
Right.
Okay, thank you for explaining all that, I was lost earlier.
Okay.
Is that what we want to do? Budget?
So, I mean, we, we do anything, we have to, uh, you know, I mean, we can hope to put this out there and, and, and hope this would be what we would return if we, if the public, you know, would not maybe against it and didn't have to put, I mean, we'll have to have a local law, we have to have a public hearing, we have to do all of them.
But therefore, that's, that's the public hearing is for us to make sure it's on a path.
So.
I, I'm okay with it, it makes, now that I understand a little bit better, it makes sense to represent that both with the state review as well as just long-term, we have to do something. And it, it, to me, it, it's a little simplistic, but it really is simply explain that we need to catch up with maintenance on things that are starting to age out and we're seeing less water usage, which means we're not getting the income we expected um to do that.
I mean, do, do I want to do it? No, I'd prefer not to, but I don't, I haven't heard any other better option of how to balance it.
Right.
All right. Okay, anything else, anything else to go? No, I'm not seeing any movement. Um, all right, Patty, are you good for tonight, Jeff and Catherine?
The, the one thing that you didn't, we didn't, because we got into the sewer fund, was you were, you were asking about uh process. Do we need to meet, need to meet next week?
That's what I'm asking before.
Yeah, do we need to make a motion to forward the revised budget? Or the public hearing, or can we just go to the public hearing with the, the trial budget, with the revised budget?
It's up to you guys, I can have it ready for Monday, uh, the revised, to send it out to you. And if you feel comfortable with it, you, I would say you wouldn't have to meet on Wednesday if you want to talk some more about it, you know.
We don't normally vote in these things, right?
No, no, the public hearing.
I don't think, I don't think we do, I'm asking whether we should be.
Well, now.
No, we don't.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I'm okay with that, I mean, traditionally.
We could just, we could just do a straw poll via email once Catherine corrects it, just make sure nobody has any further issues with it.
If we need to meet again.
Prior to the, prior to the sixth, right?
Yep, okay.
Which I think is what, to, to next point, that's probably what we've been doing for the past few years anyway.
We have, that's kind of the way we've been going.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I, I don't even recall in one, you know, two, three times we've had the third meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so Catherine, you'll get those to us Monday?
Yes, yep.
I guess that's, that should be good. All right, you have to, I think, have, Patty, do you have to have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, he is first and he is second.
Second.
Who was first? Okay, and Nick is second?
Yes.
Okay.
Dean, it would be your last official maybe budget hearing, so, you know. Explain all this stuff.
Last one.
Yeah, it hurt my head just as much as the one sixteen years ago.
Sorry.
Ready for roll call?
Sure.
Okay, trustee Whalen?
Uh, in favor?
Trustee Ganance?
In favor.
Trustee Farronkov?
In favor.
Trustee Scally?
In favor.
Mayor Janine?
In favor, and for people who came tonight, Jeff and Catherine and Patty and the public, thank you, um, we will see you soon. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye now.